Good evening. I'd like to call the Town of Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April the 12th, 2016. It is 6:30 now. We'd ask that you please stand for invocation by Reverend Paul Anderson, First Presbyterian Church. Remain standing for the pledge and also as we go into the invocation, Reverend, we'd like to remember Pastor Randy Scott from the cost of South Lake on the passing of his mother.
Okay. Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for this day and especially for the opportunity that we have to have this council meeting. We ask for your blessings upon the deliberations here to guide each who make decisions with your wisdom and your insight that good things would occur and that wisdom and truth and just good things would take place. We especially remember Pastor Scott and the loss of his mother and all those who grieve this evening. Pray that you be with them with your blessing and your peace. Thanks for this day and for our community, for your love through Christ our Lord. Amen.
...to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Burns.
Stand. President. Youzalak, you're welcome back.
Thank you very much, President.
Baron.
Here.
Barrett.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here. We'd like to formally welcome Councilwoman Marge Uzalak this evening.
Thank you.
Glad to see that you're back and that you've recuperated.
Still in.
And it's kind of like a pleasure to balance out the sides here a little bit because Don was lonely for a long time.
He told me.
So, welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Mr. Spires.
I have a letter here from Trade Winds. It's to the members of the Maryville Town Council from Richard Arnold, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Trade Wind Services. Trade Winds is in the business of providing services to individuals with special needs that we provide a sheltered work environment during the day and residential services during the evening hours and on weekends. Currently, we have group homes in several Lake County locations, including Crown Point, St. John, Hobart, and Griffith. At this time, we have a home that is not ADA compliant and has no sprinkler system because we are always looking... He's jumping around on me. They're always looking to provide better services and looking to build a new home. And the lot that we have picked is in the town of Maryville on 101st Avenue, just east of Randolph. Being that Trade Winds is a non-for-profit agency that takes care and provides services for individuals with special needs, we are requesting your consideration on waiving any possible permit or licensing fees. Trade Winds will work with all town departments to ensure that we are an asset to the community and a good neighbor. We take pride in our properties and maintain them in a manner as to make the agency proud. Thank you in advance for your consideration. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me anytime. Sincerely, Richard Arnold.
Mr. President, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for approval for discussion and I'll make my comments then.
Second. Motion in second that we waive the fees for Trade Winds as they prepare to go to home.
My motion, Mr. President, as always is that we'll waive the fees during that, but the inspectors still get their inspection fees. Secondly, I asked during before the meeting, I believe at Plan Commission, we subdivided that a while back. And this is what would be St. Joseph Street going off of, going north and south off of 101st Avenue. My other condition would be that according to what Durinda has found out, this is a single occupant home. If there are more than, if there's more than one occupant, it's going to have to come back to the Town Plan Commission and/or BZA as a group home. I in particular have had a problem in Chief Patrician's neighborhood in Grassfields with a group home before where people have wandered off. I've gotten calls from constituents. This area on the south side of, you folks may know, is Winfield and is Double Tree. So if it's just for the one individual, I don't have a problem with it. So that's part of my motion, I guess.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Motion carries. Six, zero. Thursday is World Civility Day. We just want to acknowledge that, that Thursday will be World Civility Day and we're just asking people to honor that day. Secondly, support of autism awareness on April 14th at Chick-fil-A. A portion of what you spend will be donated to autism awareness. So if you need a snack, Chick-fil-A is the place to go.
What's the time? All afternoon or anything?
I guess, oh, five to seven, I'm sorry. Five to seven. So it is around the dinner hour. Consent agenda, accounts payable register voucher for April the 12th and approval of Town Council minutes meeting from March 22nd.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilman Spann, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve the accounts payable register for April the 12th and the minutes for March 22nd, 2016. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, six, zero. Standing Committee, Budget and Finance, Councilman Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to call a Budget and Finance Committee meeting for 5:30 before the next council meeting on the 26th.
Okay. 5:30, Budget and Finance?
Yes, and I would strongly encourage even the non-members of the committee, the other three council, four council members, to please try and attend that meeting. There's a topic I want to discuss with all seven, Gene and John as well. So I'll leave it at that.
26th.
26th, before the council meeting, 5:30.
Right. Okay, anything else?
Unless Gene or Bruce have anything.
Being done, Public Works, Councilman Spann.
No report. They are working. Dylan and Jay, they're getting up the branches. So if your branches haven't been done, they're doing it and we're sweeping streets.
Bruce?
Okay, tonight before you, I've, well actually wearing your packets, was the LPA consulting contract for our federal project for the EPA, EPP project, which is the Emergency Preemption Vehicle Project. Did you get that right?
Kind of sort of, yeah. Emergency vehicle preemption.
Oh, EPP. Sorry. Had a long day. For those of you who aren't familiar, this actually allows our emergency vehicles to hold red lights and hold green lights so that they're able to get to the scene of an accident or an ambulance to an emergency quicker than, and quite safer than what they're doing now. This project is, of course, I said federal funded, it's 90/10, so we're only paying 10%. And out of that 10%, we are also partnering with three other communities. We had the largest percentage, which is 65. So for the design engineering, it's going to cost us 15,000 dollars out of a contract that's over 220,000.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Second. Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Spann, that we approve the consulting contract for LPA. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Anything else on the Public Works?
Mr. President, to Mr. Spann or to Mr. Spires, with all this rain we've had, guys, are we doing anything, Bruce, to start up? I know the temperatures have been cold, but are we doing anything to start treating any of the ponds and/or creeks for the mosquitoes?
I mean, they don't breed unless it's in the 60s.
60s, it's still too cold?
60s in the low and we've been having 30s.
Yeah.
As lows. Hopefully, the sun's coming out, it looks like, for the next week or so, and it'll start drying, drying everything up because the weather's going to start warming up too. So, yeah, once the weather gets to the point, we usually start doing mosquito abatement around mid-May when we start treating the ponds, those areas.
Okay.
And then that usually gets us through the summer.
All right.
Bruce, did you say you're going to continue picking up branches? Because some of them haven't been picked up.
In your area, they haven't yet. Today's Tuesday, they'll probably be out there maybe Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday? Yes. We're in our second week of branch pickup and your ward's scheduled for the second week.
Okay, thank you.
And then usually what we'll do is we'll send a truck or two around the following week, even though the branch pickup's over, because you're always got stragglers sitting out there. And it's easier for us to go pick up these branches and try to send code enforcement, deal with those kind of things. So we'll run through there, just tell them real quick one more time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was going to mention that because, you know, I think you guys came through my ward, but now I got more branches out now than I did.
Oh, it's like that every year, isn't it?
I'm confused.
It's more like leaf pickup, you know?
Are we making just one pass?
No, 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 I just said we're going to go through again.
We're going through again, okay, I'm sorry.
We'll send a couple trucks. We're not going to send everybody out like we have now, but we'll send a couple trucks out and get everything cleaned back up again.
Thank you. And then we have to, I have to say this, once we make that second pass through, that's it.
We've got a location for them to bring us our branches. All you have to do is take them up by the Prusing Center there at our North Barn and that's where we take them.
And the other thing, they can just bundle them up and put them in a garbage can.
Correct.
And, you know, and Waste Management will gladly pick them up.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Council Affairs, Councilwoman Uzalak.
No report.
Personnel Policy, Employee Benefits, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Uzalak.
No report.
I'd like for you to get with Bruce and set up a meeting with Prompt.
With who?
Prompt.
Medical.
Miller.
Right, Gary Miller.
Gary Miller. I'd like for you to get with Bruce and you guys figure out when to schedule a meeting with Gary Miller.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I'm going to give it to Jan to do the announcement. Good evening. Before you this evening, you have the new spring-summer 2016 brochure, park brochure. We've added some programs to that. Just a couple of things, you'll notice on the front of our brochure, we have a QR code. We're going to have those QR codes made and placed at each of our parks. This way, if anybody sees anything or has a problem, the QR code will actually take them to our town website and there they'll get some useful phone numbers or information regarding our parks or anything that they might need to call the Park Department or the town for. So with the QR code, if you're not familiar, you just put your smartphone up to it, the QR code takes it directly to the Town of Maryville's website. So the QR codes will go to the printer probably in the next week and once they're printed, they will be at each park so people can use their smartphone to get on the website for any information or any useful phone numbers that they would need. Just an update to RecTrack, which I've been speaking about quite often lately, it's the new recreation software program. I'm happy to report that the MaxStrip reader is hooked up. We are accepting credit cards as of this point. The last piece of this puzzle is to link our town website to RecTrack so people can access registrations online, either through our website or through RecTrack's webpage itself. So that's the last piece of the puzzle and then we will be up and running. We are currently using it, we are currently accepting credit cards. Everything is going well up to this point. So one more piece of the puzzle and hopefully that will be solved within the next week or so. Our Park Maintenance Department has completed a list of maintenance to be performed at all of our parks. We have some older park equipment there. There's some paint chipping off of it, some of the benches and garbage cans and picnic tables need some attention. So we're going to actually start painting tomorrow. We're starting in the fourth ward and we're going to address the parks in the fourth ward and we'll continue in each ward until we get to all of the wards and provide the maintenance that's required for each of those parks or facilities. We're working, I'm working with Chuck Gardner and New Toys on installing the new equipment at Forest Hills Park. We'll be meeting on Friday with Sean and Bruce to decide the location of the park and hopefully we can start that project in May and Forest Hills will be graced with a new playground. Last thing, my list is last year, the Park Department, I'm a part of the NSA, the National Softball Association, we sponsored a team called the Illinois Fire. I know crazy to be called Illinois Fire, but they are actually a Maryville team. They practice at Stephick Park. Because of our sponsorship and us allowing them to utilize the ball field for their practices and some games, soon there will be a banner up on the fence advertising for the Illinois Fire and sponsored by the Maryville Park Department. In consideration for us sponsoring the Illinois Fire, the Carpenter's Union, which one of the coaches is a, I'm sorry, Painter's Union, is a painter, they're going to come in and the backstop of Stephick Park will be painted and we discussed that tennis wall, they're going to come out and they're going to hydrostatically take the paint off and repaint that tennis wall at Stephick Park. Something very much needed out there. And that's the end of my report. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Anything else on the parks? Thank you. Sounds like we're inching toward the 21st century.
We're getting there.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
Yes, I have a couple things. There's, in June, will be, on Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., will be the pickup in Hobart. And then Saturday, the 11th, at Lake County Fairgrounds, will also be the Lake County Solid Waste Household Schedule. The recycle center is going to be closed down in April due to excess dumping of stuff that doesn't belong in there. Crown Point and Maryville will be shut down. It will be shut down until probably mid-May until they can figure out what they're going to do. John had talked about putting cameras up in there, but I don't know how, if they put cameras up in there and they get license plate numbers, I don't know how the town or Lake County Solid Waste is going to be able to issue somebody a ticket. So until they can get a handle on the stuff that's being dumped out there, some of the stuff that's been then put in there. You got drywall in there, you got mattresses, you got old tables.
This is the one at Strax, Chrissy?
This.
The bottom one?
Yep, those two are at Strax, the Crown Point.
Crown Point, Sierra Lake.
Right. So I can't, I can't see shutting the recycle center down because we need it. We need to promote more and more recycling because that is moving towards the 21st century. Everything that you have in your house that you're throwing in the garbage can be recycled just about. So I'm a big person that believes in recycling, so I don't believe that the site should be shut down. I don't believe this is even done by Maryville residents. I think this is done, people that are traveling through and they're throwing the stuff in there. But until we can figure out how we can manage it, because I mean, that doesn't even look good when you're going to Strax and it makes Strax look bad, it makes Maryville look bad, it makes, it makes everybody look bad. So until they can, Lake County Solid Waste can figure out what we're going to do, then the site's going to be closed.
I think one of the things maybe they need to change to location.
I was going to suggest that, Mr. President, I mean, I hate to do it to them, but because the people, you know, like Chrissy, the residents that are responsible recyclers, do we move it down to Public Works where they're going to have to check in and the hours are there and you're just going to have to abide by it because there's some bad apples that are throwing stuff that shouldn't be thrown away? I mean, we can't have, you know, Joe Stick Squad out there.
Nope.
You know, you can't have it locked up, how are you going to, you know, I mean, I don't know how solid waste, that's the only thing is unfortunately, you have to move it and just have to, you know, use Chaz and Karen and the website to promote the new location and I don't know what the Solid Waste Management Board would say.
I think we move, I think we move it north. Don't we have somebody there every day anyway?
Yeah, we do, but again, they get a lot of material and it's a south, I mean, it's a Lake County site, it's their solid waste district.
Yeah.
But you're right about moving it. One of the big issues is we're not, you don't have Maryville residents throwing their garbage in there because everyone has garbage. You have to have garbage if you live in an apartment.
Yeah, we have a yellow lid.
Everybody has access to recycling other than the people that live in apartments. But the problem is it's at Strax, quite frankly. And you're getting people that are outside Maryville who are maybe in unincorporated areas of the county who don't have garbage service. So even as I said to Chrissy before the meeting, I mean, it's pretty convenient. They stop by, they drop off a couple bags of garbage and they go in and go shop for groceries. You go buy more garbage.
But you know what, guys, you know what?
So when you need, when you go to Strax, it's garbage day.
Chrissy, are these three photos from Crown Point, is that the one over by the sewage treatment plant?
Yep, that's the one I have.
So see, it's not, Crown Points isn't in a commercial area.
No. And Crown Point's getting it just as bad.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't, I don't know necessarily if moving it to another location is going to do, I think that to have, when Lake County Solid Waste opens this site backup, to have their own people out there that are out there and they're explaining to people what, what is recyclable, what is not recyclable, what can go in there and what can't go in there and have them kind of keeping an eye on it, it might deter people from pulling up there and just dumping their stuff there.
Okay, but, okay, I'm still saying that we should move the site, but, okay.
Well, you could move the site in conjunction with Solid Waste Management District, monitor it either with, you know, part-time, an intern, a retired person that's, you know, is responsible that, you know, is going to be, you know, a little tougher than, no offense, a college kid might be that's on an internship. I don't know, I mean, I guess that's something you could take back to the, to the board and see what they, if they're interested, but I would agree with Rich, we probably need to get out of the parking lot.
But here's our other problem there. People are used to dumping there now, even when the receptacles are gone, guess what? They're going to still dump there.
Same spot.
Yep, because that's, that's where they've been dumping it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how we can fix that unless they post something to say that it's moved to here. You know, if they say that it's been moved, then maybe they won't dump. But if there's nothing there that says that it's been moved, then when we go by there, when you go to Strax...
Sounds like a good article for Chaz and Karen.
You're going to be just as disappointed.
I mean, somebody come to a glass door there. There's, there's companies that recycle glass.
Yeah.
We don't, Lake County Solid Waste doesn't...
Like the storm door, you mean?
A glass out of a door.
Oh, a glass out of a door, oh, okay.
I mean, there's places that take, that they recycle the glass.
Well, that...
But you have, you have to post, I guess we need to start making it more information, you know, to people, where they can take the stuff.
Right.
But I believe, when I look at that and I see mattresses sitting there, drywall sitting there, that's not something that...
Although the dumping...
That's not a regular resident would take up and...
But the dumping folks happens all over. Joe and I can attest, I get calls, five, six, seven, eight garbage bags out of state mail, 97th Avenue, right, Chief? We've, I've had calls on that before, so people dump wherever they want to dump. Fly dumping, I mean, right, roofing contractors will fly dumping.
The tire companies dumping out some, 97th, Ram Bullard, 97th Clay, I'm not talking about five or six tires, I'm talking about 200 tires.
And there's a recycle program available for the recycled tires. I mean, all you got to do is take them there and dump them in the bin.
Jan and Bruce, we had to do that major cleanup on the Arielakawana Trail last summer and that was a, that was a, that's a pathetic contractor that dumped his contractor and construction brazier.
Well, the only thing I can say, ladies and gentlemen, is that just like with the guys that put up the signs for houses, we buy houses, you just have to catch them.
Yeah, you do.
And write down a license plate number, if you got your phone, take a picture and turn it in and we can get them.
Yep.
Once you get one, the rest of them are stopped. You got to get one, it's got to be a big hitter.
Well, that's what they're talking about, putting cameras up, so...
That's, you got to do that. You got to do that. All right, anything else on the economic development?
Math?
Environmental, actually.
Huh?
Environmental.
Oh, environmental, okay, yeah.
We've actually, Gompas started the Ross Middle Farms Drainage Improvement Project and we're getting some good feedback from, from the residents there, so everything's going as according to plan. Our board also approved engineering for improvements at the 7100 block of Virginia Street, as well as redesign of a portion of South Mar Park for drainage improvements. And we're also looking at some improvements in old Mill Manor along Lincoln Mill Road, regenerating some of those swales, get some of that water off the road a little bit better. And also met with Congressman Wiskowski's office today about federal funding and so that meeting went very well. And our latest newsletter article is in regards to proper disposal of automotive fluids. We included a lot of the local places, Jiffy Lubes and all that, that you can get your used oil disposed of and recycled for free, so that's all I have.
What about 53rd Court, West 53rd Court?
Yeah, Gatlin's coming up with the, I met with Robinson out there, Gatlin's coming up with a schedule for that. That should happen in the next month or so.
All right, because I had a community meeting last week and the guy that's right there, 1142, I think?
Yeah.
The guy that was going to do the dogs at one time?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys are taking part of his driveway?
Part of the driveway apron and we're actually going to bring it right at a seam so it's going to look just fine when it's done, because it was replaced during the first part of that project. And actually, we did some more clearing and snagging along that lateral there. We had a contractor go back there and do some more clearing and snagging, getting rid of debris and branches and all that kind of stuff back there. But it shouldn't take, shouldn't take Gatlin very long to do that project, to redo that, just that one section. So it'll probably take them about three, four days to do.
All right, because that was, he was concerned about that.
Yeah, we talked to him when he was out there, we told him what it would be at and it's going to look just fine, the apron will look just fine when it's done.
And then he's happy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the environmental? Elections, Public Relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Yes, two things. This year, Indiana is celebrating its bicentennial and they're having a torch relay throughout Indiana and on a date to be determined in October, they will be coming through Maryville.
Yes.
And also, I just wanted to re-announce that the Fourth of July Parade will be on the Fourth of July this year at noon.
Where will it start?
West Geist.
Geist's funeral.
All the way down to 61st?
To the Maryville High School.
The High School.
To the High School? Okay.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Utility Liaison, Councilwoman Baron.
Yes. Our cap program was so successful that we actually won a bench. So I would ask the council to donate this bench to HEPA D-Building. For them, they did contribute a lot of caps to the program and I just think it would be a nice way to show them that we appreciate the way that they put their input into the program.
Joanne Sillik called me today. She's a manager there and she questioned me on the bench and I said, I'll try to find out tonight and hear your answer.
There you go, yeah.
Yep, because they want a bench.
Yeah, I think that it's well deserved.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we donate a bench, one of the recycled benches to HEPA.
I said...
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Uzalak, that we donate our bench to HEPA Building C.
D.
E. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, five, six to seven. Anything else on the Utility Liaison?
Nope.
Okay, abandoned properties. Attorney Buschemi passed out. Secure view, changing the face of vacant abandoned properties. There's the ordinance that's going to come up later on in the meeting that talks about removing all of the plywood off of all buildings and residential homes and going to carbon pollinate, pollinated, polyated glass. And if we can do that, if you look at the pictures that are here, this speaks volumes for what we want to do. And especially on Broadway where we've got those three buildings now that, the Chinese Chinese restaurant, the old taco building, and the old sandwich shop that sit right on Broadway down in the, um, 6500 going north, and we need to clean those up. And once we pass this ordinance, then this is gonna help us clean that up. I just asked that, uh, as you, uh, as you go through your areas and start, uh, making note of anything that you see that's plywooded now, because those are gonna be the things that we're gonna start going after. We're gonna ask those people that's got plywood up, it's gonna be mandated that they remove the plywood and put up this material. And also, uh, as you go through your wards, I, I ask you to, uh, we're, we're trying to build an inventory for all vacant, uh, homes, either for sale or foreclosed on, or people just walked away from them. And if you could let Vicky know, when you see, even if it's just a for-sale sign in the yard, we, just let us know. And then she'll do the homework to find out, you know, how long it's been vacant, because anything that is, uh, 90 days or more, they have to register with the town. So we, we just want to be able to start that process now, so, 'cause as we go into this thing, we're starting to get our momentum. We've got some other things that we've done, and that we continue to do as far as, uh, abandoned buildings go. But this is gonna be a great tool, and if you guys can just let us know when you see one. Uh, and she's got, uh, uh, her people now, that when they're out on patrols looking for stuff, and when they see a vacant and abandoned building, then they're writing them down, and they're gonna have a laundry list of all of those that are vacant and abandoned, and we're gonna start, you know, the registrations are coming in. We've probably got about 50 people that's registered, so that's $5,000 worth of, uh, money that we got that we didn't have, uh, for this program. So I just, I appreciate everybody's support as we continue to do this, but I just ask now, I know it's a little bit more effort, but I just ask that you guys help us with this thing so that we can build an inventory, and we'll be able to know, you know, who to go after, and from this point forward.
Councilman, Councilman's correct, the success of our enforcement program on, uh, upgrading the blight appearance, the success of the program will be driven in large part by the quality of the database that we have, and the completion, the completeness of the database, so if everyone involved reports locations, that'll improve our database, and that's gonna make the program more successful.
Is the property owner responsible for the installation?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, they're gonna be responsible for it. Um, one of the things is that what, that what we do is that, you know, we've, we've got bad actors that don't cut their grass and all of this stuff. We, we're now gonna be in a position to, to cut their grass and send them the bill, and then if we have to cut it once a week, twice, once every two weeks or whatever, we can do that, because it'll be just continuous. We won't have to send up another notice. We send them one notice, and then we're gonna be good for a whole year.
And those multiple bills, Councilman, remember, can be, are then filed annually as liens upon the real estate, so that the town, if the debtor doesn't pay, the town has a security interest in the real estate. At the time that the real estate is sold, all of those back bills will be paid to the town.
Really, on that committee, we're looking for it, if you drive through Maryville and you think every house is full, so if you live five houses down from empty house, you actually drag down your property, it's not gonna happen no more.
Yeah, one of the things that, by going with this, uh, this clear, secure, secured polycarbonated, uh, material, is that when we put plywood up in our residential community, then, uh, property values decrease by 29%. That's a proven fact. So by doing this, by going with this, that's going to increase our property value by 29%.
About these homes where the bank took over?
Well, it's...
Same.
Bank is responsible, uh, Councilwoman, if they become the owner, because they are the owner just like a private owner.
It owned the record at that time.
Mr. President, two, uh, two questions to, to John, I guess. Um, one, back to ordinance 1611 and the Secure View, um, I don't wanna put up this material. I'm leaving my plywood up. I've already invested, all I'm gonna do, what's our, does Vicky then cite them?
Yes, and they're, they're, they are, they are brought, they're brought before the unsafe building hearing officer, who has a variety of enforcement tools to obtain compliance.
Okay. Uh, secondly, uh, I think you mentioned it to me once before, John, and maybe Bruce did, uh, what is the drop dead date on tearing down that building on Broadway and 71st on the west side?
Didn't you tell us the render May 1st?
It's gonna be down by May 1st.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's the point.
All right, but, uh, 'cause quite frankly, I'm tired of, of hearing from the businesses on the east side about how crappy that looks on the west side, so, and I happen to know the guy personally who's got it, and I run into him, and I've told him that before. So it's no, no secret, you know, that it, it's an eyesore.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, that's, uh...
All right, so May 1st.
We know that's coming, and then, you know, on a positive note also, as I close this, is that the nursing home, Northlake, has been sold. And I think a good owner, uh, person, the person that bought it is gonna be good for Town of Maryville, and he's looking to make it into senior housing, so...
And I hate to, I hate to continue, Mr. President, but just hear me out. With the improvements now that Madison and 73rd are back up going again, John, do we have any update on the tax situation with the old mill and the carriage house?
We're, we're looking specifically at the old mill property. I, I haven't been instructed to look at carriage house, but I'd be happy to do that.
If you don't mind, Mr. President, those, you know, we're, we're spending almost $6 million in those two corridors, and they're atrocious. That's the only way I can describe it. You and I go into Aquinas, we drive all the time, and I see it every morning, and it's, I just, you know, what can we do with that thing? And I know John and Gene and Bruce looked at it and the tax situation, we need to, you know, the owners need to do something, you know, have some responsibility.
We will address it tomorrow, Sean.
Okay. It's sad. Unfortunately, it's sad what's happened to that old mill, but...
It is, it's very sad, but we will, we'll address it, and we'll get, we'll, we'll get aggressive with it now.
Question?
Yes, sir.
The old mill and the carriage house are both historic items. Are we gonna have a facial...
Nope, can't save the old mill. Bruce has had two engineers go in there.
I'm not talking about saving it, I'm saying...
They're not, they're not historic buildings anyways.
The old mill is.
No, the old mill isn't.
The old mill is.
The, the old mill has been reviewed by the State of...
They used to make moonshine out of there, Chrissy.
The old mill, the old mill's been inspected by the State Historical Commission. They said that there's no real historic value to it anymore.
It's a historic...
Because it's been cut up so bad.
It's been cut up, yeah.
Yeah, to be a restaurant, that there's really nothing left of the mill itself, which would have been your historic spot.
Well, and, and your report, Bruce, from the two engineers, said black mold and cracked foundations, right? So there's two strikes right there.
The building's gotta come down, it's unsafe.
Yeah, it's unsafe, so unfortunately, we've lost it.
Wrecking ball is in this future.
Can you tell us who bought the nursing home?
I'm not gonna tell you.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe it was public information.
No, it's not, if it is, it's gotta come out of the county.
Okay.
But just, I'm happy that it was bought.
Well, I think it's good.
It's, I'm happy. Um, okay, that, general orders, first reading ordinance, ordinance 16 dash 10, and ordinance Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating Broadway Tiff Debt Service Fund retroactive to April 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve ordinance 1610 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fair.
No comment? Are you voting?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
You don't mind, do you?
No, I'm just...
It's America, right?
What?
It's abstaining.
Yeah, it's abstaining.
Is it, wake up, he hadn't known it.
Use that. Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Get it?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes, motion carries five with one abstention. Ordinance 16 dash 11, ordinance Town of Maryville, of the Town Council, Town of Maryville, Indiana, to amend a vacant and abandoned building registration and maintenance ordinance. That's kinda like ties into what we just talked about.
Members of the council, this is, the purpose of this ordinance is to amend our existing vacant and abandoned building registration ordinance to specify the polycarbonate material that Councilman Hardaway just discussed as our board up material. If, on that brochure that, uh, Councilman Hardaway mentioned to everyone that's on your desk, if you look at the fourth page in from the cover, there's a good, simple before and after showing the appearance, the unsightly appearance when it's boarded up, and the pleasant curb appeal appearance that will help preserve property values in our neighborhoods by using this polycarbonate material. There'll be a revision to this ordinance, Councilman, uh, to add some additional provisions prior to second reading, but, uh, we ask that the council consider it and approve it tonight on first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, 1611.
I'll second it with a point of clarification, Mr. President, for the press. This ordinance says they shall use this Secure View, guys. This isn't, this isn't a choice, correct?
Right, no, it's no choice.
That's correct.
This is not a choice, this is, they shall do it, or again, as I brought up the question, they will be cited by Vicky and the, and the code officers and gone through the process.
And Councilman, under, according to law, and within the authority, the legal authority of the Town Council, to protect the public health and welfare of the residents and property owners within the town, the town does have the legal authority to make reasonable requirements for specifications of materials, including board up materials.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve ordinance 16 dash 11. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Span? No comment. Any questions?
Yuzelak?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Get it?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five with one abstention. Uh, that concludes first reading ordinance, second reading ordinance 16 dash 01, and ordinance of Town of Maryville, Town Council, amending the municipal code to permit enforcement of nuisance violations on real estate and noxious weeds violations by the Unsafe Building Hearing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve ordinance 16 dash 06 on second reading. At this time, because it's a second reading ordinance, we open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Yes.
I'm a public comment on the ordinance?
On the ordinance.
I'm a, I'm a way to a public comment section.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span?
No comment.
Yeah, I understand. Use that?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five with one abstention. Uh, ordinance 16 dash 07, ordinance Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 15 dash 34, fixing the salaries and pay for employees in Town of Maryville, Indiana, for the calendar year 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, is there any discussion? And because this is a second reading ordinance, it is now open to the public for any discussion, any discussion on ordinance 16 dash 07.
I just have one question, though.
Would you, would you step up to the mic, state your name and address, please?
Yes. Leonard White, 1089 West 60th Place, Maryville. Um, I just had a question about the ordinance in terms of, uh, amending it. I kinda thought that when you had the budget workshops back in August of last year, that this was already done, so what would the amendment to the salaries actually be?
You said, "What was the amendment?"
Yes.
That, that, we created a code enforcement, Director of Code Enforcement, and so we had to put our salary into the order.
Okay, and that would be the only salary that's amended? Uh, okay, thank you. Question asked.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Span?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Get it?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five zero. Ordinance 16 dash 09, ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Maryville Fire Territory Cumulative Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve ordinance 16 dash 09 on second reading. Is there any other discussion? At this time, because it is a second reading ordinance, uh, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Span? Use that?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Get it?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five zero. Uh, that concludes second reading ordinance says resolutions, resolution 16 dash 11, resolution Town of Maryville, Town Council, Maryville, Indiana, Lake County, in support of community civility counts initiative. Oh, here, yeah, let's, let's put this into the records. Uh, whereas the Town Council of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana recognizes the, the citizenry of this great municipality, desire to build a wonderful community in which we live, work, and play. And whereas the manner in which government reaches a decision can be as important as the actual decision, and whereas meetings conducted in a fair, open, and civil manner can enhance credibility and acceptance of the matter under consideration, and whereas the town desires to create an atmosphere where everyone can manage the business at hand efficiently, fairly, transparently, while adhering to commonly accepted practices of courtesy and decorum. And whereas the community civility counts initiative is taking up the challenge to ensure a mode of decorum is apparent in all public meetings, and now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, resolves that the Town Council hereby expresses its support for the community civility counts initiative, and in connection therewith will strive to make citizen interactions with the town a positive experience for all parties, duly adopted on this 12th day of April 2016.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve Resolution 16 dash 11. Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes resolutions, uh, no BBA action. Is there any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. We'll ask anyone that has public comment, we ask that you come up, state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Name is Curtis Pearson, precinct minimum, uh, Maryville 25, 2830 West 54th Place. Um, first of all, I wanna commend Town of Maryville for doing a good job that they're doing out here. Um, I had, uh, in terms of corners and curves and the different stuff like that I'm seeing, I had, uh, talked with my councilman, Span, a year ago, and we talked about some things, uh, that could be done in my area, in my precinct, which he assured me might take place. And then, uh, that didn't happen, then he told me I should talk with Mrs. Spirez myself. And I did that, and I found out that, uh, the areas to be paid, that was promised to my precinct to be paid, is not gonna happen. is not going to happen. So that's okay. But I was just wondering, what can we get into my precinct? Sometimes, you know, we need something in Maryville, twenty-five. We get looked over. Now, bring in your attention to my precinct. At Fifty-Fourth and Chase Street, about ten houses south, almost before the airport, is my precinct. To the south of that, those houses, is a, is a trailer court. And that's part of Maryville, twenty-five, it's part of Maryville. I heard y'all talk about picking up the leaves, the limbs and all of that. It hardly ever get picked up out there, okay? You had the people to put it out there, they put it out there, they complained to me about that several times. Chuck holes are so bad out there. If we could get some at the trailer park.
Trailer park's private. Those streets are not belong to the town.
The park is part of Maryville.
Still private.
Park is part of my precinct, part of Maryville.
Private property.
It's just like.
It's just like an apartment complex.
So what are you saying? This part of Maryville, but you don't service it? So who service them?
Not with our public works department.
No one does. The owner of the mobile home park should be taking care of the infrastructure. It's private property. We're not allowed to go on private property with public works employees. It's against the law. He's going to go Sidewalk Six.
Okay.
Okay? We're not, we're not going down that road, at least, since Rich and I've been on the council thirteen.
So there's no services rendered for them by Maryville at all?
It's up to the property owner to maintain those roads for those people.
Okay.
They should.
Okay. Well, then, why did some of the people from Town, Town Board, from the public works tell them to put the leaves out, the limbs? Do we pick those up either? See, I need to know this so I know what I'm doing out there. They're telling me, y'all ain't doing it, I want to know.
That entire property, if it's sixteen acres, the owner of that sixteen acres can collect it from all of his residents and put it up along Fifty-Third.
So we got no jurisdiction at all in terms of doing anything for them?
We got jurisdiction from police department, fire department. We don't have any, but we can't go on the property. That's just like, you know where Regency Park is, over on Sixty-first Avenue?
Right, right.
Behind Ultra?
Right.
That's private. And they, they get no problem, they get no town services either.
Okay.
You know, we can't go and plow these streets or repair these streets.
Just like the apartments that Councilperson Barron got.
Okay. All right, well, I apologize, I didn't know that.
That's okay.
You know, I know it's part of my precinct, I'm over there registering people to vote. So my understanding was, you know, they're part of city services, and they complained to me about it. So that's why I brought it to you guys. Okay, well, thank you, I'm okay. Looking forward to your promise.
Chase Street.
Oh, Chase Street, anyway, you gotta do that, this is all screwed up. That ain't just, that's me, that's everybody.
Well, that's what we do, we take care of everybody.
That's not Maryville, twenty-five, though, but look, you always talk about what you can't do for me. Just tell me what you can.
Okay.
Huh?
Thank you.
Ain't done yet. What you can?
Chase Street.
Chase Street, that's it?
That's it for now.
All right, good enough. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Good afternoon, again, council, I'm sure everybody know me here. Actually, I want to speak to the public a little bit as well as you guys.
You got three minutes.
I got one minute, council, I'm caught, real quick. Former member of the Maryville Stormwater Management District. I got appointed by that board, by the council, and it was a pretty rough job to have. They only pay like a hundred bucks a month, but, but sitting on that position, I got beat around like a panetta, just with participating in that. I'm sure, talked to Sean about it before, talked to a couple of you guys before, so I just want to let you know, I never got an opportunity to actually do the job that you guys appointed me to do. As a matter of fact, it interfered with my county job. And in that context, my job description, everything got changed with that. However, I just think it was inappropriate for outside individuals to come into Maryville and to interfere in any public works or utilities. I think that was not correct. I don't want to take up all my three minutes, but I did want to say something about drop off centers, because that was my job. And that's not my job any longer, so you wonder why they look pretty bad? Because the guy that used to take care of them is no longer there. That's me. I was also the grant administrator, gave Maryville quite a lot of money, a couple hundred thousand dollars every year. In terms of the caps program, as long as, it's good to cap, to collect caps, but at the same time, I don't think it's good for Maryville employees to be driving them down to Evansville. I don't think that's a good idea. That costs a lot of money. And you can also use your recycling grant dollars to buy those, those type of benches. You don't really have to wait until you collect like two tons of material, because they are made out of recycled content, so don't be afraid to use recycling grant. I'm saying it from a public citizen now, as I used to be that a grant administrator. Again, I just want to say something to this council about outsiders coming into your community and threatening, intimidating your employees. So with that said, and the reason I'm saying it on record, because working for the solid waste district, always know records get screwed around or doctored and that nature. So thanks for letting me in here a little bit, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dee Evans Hein, I live at seventy-one ten Polk Court. This is a happy thing, okay, happy thing. My church, Peace United Church of Christ, on the twenty-first of April, we're having a soup and salad in the afternoon, it's a Thursday, from eleven o'clock to one-thirty. And we're inviting everybody to come. And also, we are also a participant in one of sixteen churches in Maryville, and we don't see much publicity about it. It's an event called Feed the Flock. And at the Presbyterian Church, every Saturday, in that seventy-eight ninety-eight Taff Street, the churches take turns feeding people for free.
Every Saturday?
Every single Saturday, anybody that wants to come, if you're a senior citizen, if you're a person that needs to stretch your dollars, and we have some people that don't have too many dollars. But we have a lot of senior citizens that come. I've been doing it three years now. And they don't get out much. And so they come on Saturday, they see other people, and their new, their faces are not new, they're familiar faces, and they get together. And sometimes people need just as much as food, they need to interact with other people that care about them. And they do care, and we love to see the people come in. Last Saturday, our church was taking our turn, and we had a hundred and thirty-five meals we served. So like to get the word out, we, in fact, we had turkey and noodles, and it was really good, because I made the gravy. Anyway, I just wanted to get the word out, so I was here. And I'm also here to welcome Margie back. I'm so glad that she's able to walk in that door, I almost cried after what she's been through. And Margie's been to our soup and salad, and we know, and she knows that our church ladies cook good. So you're all welcome. I'll verify that.
Maybe what we need to do is, if, do you have a list of churches for each Saturday?
No, I do not have it.
I mean, can you get us a list?
Oh, yes, I can get it.
Maybe if you get us a list, then maybe we can utilize the marquee sometime to put it out here on the front for you, how's that?
That'd be wonderful. There is a banner, when you go down Taff Street, it's a huge banner on the church that says free meals on Saturday, eleven to two. And this winter, we had a group of teenagers that were coming from Wisconsin, and they were going down to New Orleans to help, again, build houses that were washed away. And they saw the banner, and they stopped in, and they had been given money, and they, they gave us money. Good. So it was nice.
Give us that information, and we'll put it out there, and weekly, we'll change it whenever, you know, to just let people know where it's at.
Yeah, it doesn't matter which church, all the churches do it. Also, there's two houses on my block, and Vicki's new assistant did come, but the window on one of the houses, the woman died a year and a half ago, and her family just left the house. And the window is pushed in, and rain is coming in and everything.
Does Vicki have the address?
Yeah, the assistant, and I'm sorry to say, I forgot her name. Tiffany, yes, she was there, but the window is still open, and it's a west window.
We'll address it. We'll, we'll put some plywood up until we pass it. Okay, is any other public comment? Yes, sir.
We've matured eighteen thirty-three, what's Eighty-Fourth Drive. Just had a couple of questions. I just wanted to know, was there on record or any kind of city ordinance that requires any apartment complex to have any emergency management planning in, in effect, anything like that? Because I am one of the residents that suffered from this fire that just happened about a week ago.
I'm not aware of it. I don't know if our fire chief could probably answer this question better than any of us in the room, but.
Yeah, state fireworks are all lines for different occupancies in the town and for apartment complexes, there are things that are enforced by the town's fire inspector. I think I know what you're speaking of, if you're talking about the system testing.
I'm actually talking a little bit more than that.
Okay. That's one, that's one of them. And as far as that goes, where we are going to be speaking with, actually, we already have spoken with inspectors, already spoke with property management, that the way they notify people about the testing is not the correct way to do it, so that's going to be changing.
I'm even going a little further, deeper than that. I have another question now. Does the Town of Maryville have an emergency manager director?
We have one that is basically traffic. I, I know what you're looking at. Some people were displaced and had no place to go. I think Mr. Hardley worked on that weekend, trying to get some places for people.
Oh, they had places, they didn't have any food.
Well, it's a little bit deeper than that.
Well, no, to answer your question, we don't have a person that's paid, is to respond to your question. I know what you're, we don't have a, everybody that's our EMAs are volunteers.
Okay.
And basically, all they do is that they direct traffic at parades and funerals and assist for football, basketball games at the, around the schools, and Fourth of July Parade.
Also, normally through the fire department, for single-family residences, after a fire emergency, when we, we call our board of company, our recommended board of company, and they have victim assistance for single families, when it's a large scale incident like, like what happened to your apartment complex, that's more for the property management once again to, to coordinate with Red Cross and Salvation Army.
Yeah, I mean, I understand all this, but, I mean, I used to work for the City of Chicago, I'm just like trying to get some answers here, because per volume, per people that actually live and travel through here, I'm just kind of surprised that you guys really don't have an emergency manager director that actually has contingencies and plans, or even there, there's a policy in place that actually works and coordinates with everyone in any kind of a major event, whether it could be a major traffic accident, flood, fire, or major catastrophe or anything else. So, I mean, that's why I'm asking. And not only that, but I got a solution for you guys, dumping problem. And here's the solution. Chief, you can go to JTLC, Dory Task Force, ask Homeland Security, they have a camera system that you actually is motion activated, that actually can record with a zoom in, and it's remote accessible. They, they may be able to get it, but you all can get it, I believe that law enforcement can get one easily. But that's just one solution, that's just, you know, but that's just getting off topic. But, I mean, I'm just asking these questions, because when these types of events happen, we were just like, okay, everyone dropped the ball, we're trying to figure out what's what. I mean, I'm not trying to beat anybody over head, you guys did a wonderful job. Everyone here did pretty much a wonderful job on picking up and helping. We were just confused on what part Maryville wanted to play in this, because no one even from the city of Maryville, except for a couple key individuals, explained to us what was going on. And the city manager did a great job, too, because I talked to him.
Can I make a suggestion to you?
Yes.
A lot of times, homeowners association, all you people living there like that, keep yourself association together, and not, you know, through, through an association, you guys can kind of, you know, have a little bit of dues, you raise some funds, and that association, used to be, Maryville at one time before was a city, every, every community had.
We're still not a city.
We're still a town. Before we were a town. We had, every community had association, and they would raise funds and kind of, and I was president of Young America Homework, Lincoln, Young America, and we, we paid for us, we, we used to have dances and stuff to raise funds to spray for mosquitoes. Then when Maryville was incorporated, biggest thing was, everyone wanted no taxes, lease taxes. The problem we incorporated, that's what we incorporated on, and after that, after we incorporated, next year, they froze all the taxes. So you're talking, you're sitting there talking to us, the people that, actually, we have very, a very, a lot of money to work with, just like the gentleman come up and said about the roads. We'd love to have more money for the roads, we'd love to have more money. The problem is, everything we have is, you know, we're, you know, if you, you take our, our same town, our same house, put in a community, they're paying way more taxes than they do in Maryville. That's why all these people want to build apartments in Maryville.
Well, the goal is to come here tonight, come up with positive solutions, right?
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
No, no, your, 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 yeah, it's good, but I'm just saying, a lot of time we're through association, or you guys working together, you can, you accomplish a lot in your, in your area.
Okay, not a problem. I'm, I'm just asking questions, that's all.
No, that's fine, you should ask questions.
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you, you asked for your time.
Points well taken. Any other public comment?
Were you looking for food?
No, they, they were, they're okay.
I, I, I want to direct them right now, just in case they, that's all.
All right. And to finish up on what this young man just said, we, as the town council, Saturday, opened up our doors and were able to provide food to the displaced families. And what happened was, I was contacted on Friday, and the people were concerned, because they, they had a place to stay, but they didn't have access to food. So I contacted the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. They brought in four pallets of food, and we had it back here Saturday afternoon. And the, those people were able to come in, and it's a testament to us that sitting up there, it wasn't, I, I made the phone call, but it just shows that we, as a council, were concerned about the residents that were displaced, and we just took the lead in this thing and got them the food that they needed. And Bruce and Dorinda have worked diligently to continue to get information as to when they'll be able to go in and get their, their belongings, and hopefully find other apartments within the complex, if that's their desire. But I applaud each one of us, because we did an excellent job in helping them, because had we not helped them, then they would have still been trying to figure out where they're going to get food from. And to kind of like to piggyback off it, I don't know if they told you guys, but Sunday, there's going to be a clothing giveaway at the North Fire Station from eleven to two, if I'm not mistaken, chief. Twelve to two, or something like that. The North Station is right at Fifty-seventh and Tyler. So if you know anybody, if you could tell anybody, if anybody needs clothes or whatever, if you could please direct them there.
For people to donate clothes.
And, and if there's anybody that wants to donate clothes, that's an opportunity to do that, as in caring. But no, we, we stepped up to the plate, and we should be proud of what we did, because these are our citizens, our residents, Chrissy's, more importantly, they're her constituents. And it was in coming up on the Town of Maryville to step up when everybody else stepped back.
How, chief, how has the, the owners been to deal with since the fire?
Be honest.
Confusing? Well, I'll go on to segue, Mr. President, and I know, I don't want to delay the meeting, I apologize, but the thought came into my head, John, you know what? This council aggressively tried to get a rental registration ordinance in place, and we got pushed back by these guys, and they're lobbyists, and we got threatened with lawsuits, and we wanted to have our officers and our building inspector go in and double check these things. This gentleman's asking about a disaster plan, chief, and what they're doing, this is a prime example, this is a huge complex for Chrissy, they were probably, they're probably the biggest complex in town, if I'm not mistaken. And what did we get, John? We got threatened with lawsuits, because we were trying to be proactive and get these guys in there, so that these folks, in the long run, might be protected. And so.
Well, not only, not only, not only threatened with a lawsuit, they, they deployed their, they deployed their high-paid lobbyists at the General Assembly the following session, and were able to pass legislation that forced the town to repeal its ordinance.
Right. Okay. Any other public comment?
I, I want to.
Yes, ma'am.
That there are organizations, nonprofit organizations out there that do, um, um, help and assist in situations as this, and if the town council would like, the FOPA is one of them. And if the town council would like, the FOPA is one of them, we would have provided probably each family with a gift from a local grocery store, and I know that that isn't what you want to hear, but it's helpful.
Yes, that's, that's what we, we want to do.
And that's what Councilman Hardaway was here for.
We, we needed a resource, and nobody was giving us, I mean, except for the Red Cross. So the Red Cross and, you know, the food that we have from you guys on, uh,
the trustee's office also, the trustee also offers vouchers.
You, you don't even want me to get on that phone, soapbox, trust me. Trust me, you don't want me to get on that.
But anyway, there are organizations out there that do help. And I would like to be on record that the FOPA would be glad to help.
There are organizations, uh, but with those organizations, Dorinda is a lot of red tape. And, you know, when people need stuff, and they've been burned out, they, they're not gonna, they don't carry around birth certificates, virus license, and all of it.
We don't, we don't-
I, I know, I'm just saying that, that they don't. And that's why sometimes government makes things too difficult. And that's why we have to, as we did, and I say we, as we did, took the bull by the horns, made the necessary phone calls, and did what no other entity within Ross Township would do. And that's all I want to say about it.
As Mr. Yurga knew, I was on the fire department for twenty-five years, and I was one of those members on the fire department to help organize and set up to make sure that there was a chain of command that had to be followed for contacting the Red Cross, Salvation Army, Goodwill, whatever it was to help these people in need. I was, um, a person who had to suffer a fire myself, I know.
And we appreciate that, but let me just say this, as I, as we get ready to go home, is that everybody that lives in this town was aware of the fire. Everybody. So there's no reason why the groups that should have been helping them shouldn't have reached out to them and said, what can we do to help you?
Which is why I asked Chief Yurga about the owners.
Right.
And if you're operating a business, and you challenge us on something we wanted to do, and when it was time to step up for those people that had made a monthly payment into your pocket, where are you guys at? And that can go on record, Chaz. No offense, Chrissy, it's not my ward, but, you know, the, like, I got an email for, that I forwarded to Chrissy, came to me, but I, I'm sorry, you know, they want to come in and they want to operate in our town, and when, when we ask them for something, we get pushed back. And then we're the bad guys because we don't approve their project, you know, sorry. Put a stress on these guys out here, you know?
Right.
Thank God no one on, on Ed's side was hurt that I know of, were they?
Exactly.
No.
And, you know, Sean, we could beat this thing all night.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a horrible source of poverty for a lot of reasons, and primarily because, uh, the way that these people was treated when they did.
How many were, how many were displaced?
Thirty-four families.
Thirty-four families.
And we're still suffering.
Right.
We're still waiting, we, we don't, we don't have a place to go, except with, yes, we are in hotels, whatever. We still need monetary. My husband personally, my husband and I, we have not gone to work since that day.
Right.
And we missing, we're missing two checks in my household, which we need right now. But what do we do? No monetary, nothing, no help from, we can't get help from anywhere.
Ma'am, we could be here all night, yeah.
It's just got straight, it's, it's frustrating.
You already got my blood pressure on. So, alright, uh, announcements. Abandoned lighted properties committee meeting tomorrow, April thirteenth at eleven AM. Town council workshop meeting is April the twentieth at six PM. Environmental resource committee meeting, April twenty-first at two PM. Town council, the next town council meeting is April twenty-sixth at six thirty PM. One more minute.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
What, what announcement?
Oh, it's-